Members of council, I will call this committee, the whole meeting for Wednesday, October ninth, to order. Mr. Clark, could you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Okay, Mr. Clark, we have quorum. Members of council, declarations of pecuniary interest. Okay, and I see none, and I see none online. Mr. Clark, we'll move on. We have two presentations today. Presentation four point one, Sandra Austin, Executive Director, Strategic Initiatives, and Leslie Ann Folds, Manager of Corporate Services, on the Developing Durham Region's 2025 Strategic Plan. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Henry. I'd like to ask Counselor Crawford if she'd like to introduce the presentation, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Henry and members of council. I am pleased to introduce this agenda item on behalf of the Strategic Plan Advisory Group. Over the past year and a half, Mayor Watten, who so graciously volunteered me for this, and myself, have represented council along with Elaine Baxter-Chaher, Brian Bridgman, and Dr. Kyle, to champion the development of Durham Region's 2025 Strategic Plan. A memo to council was shared on February, October, sorry, Friday, October the fourth, that indicated the draft Strategic Plan. Today, the project team will provide a brief overview of the work completed to date, introduce the draft Strategic Plan, and share the upcoming opportunities for council and community to provide feedback on the plan. I will now turn it over to Sandra Austin, Executive Director of Strategic Initiative, and Leslie Ann Folds, Manager of Corporate Initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crawford. So, we are now in phase four of the process to develop the region's 2025 Strategic Plan. So, this is the writing phase. All of the heavy lifting of all of that engagement has culminated in this point. And so, since our last update to council in June, staff have completed further data analysis. We have met with subject matter experts. We've had regular checkpoints with our staff Strategic Plan Steering Committee and the advisory group, which includes your council representatives, to develop the draft plan, which is included in your meeting materials today. So, we also wanted to point out that there has been a slight revision to the project timeline, recognizing that you have a number of agenda items being brought forward to council in December, including the regional budget. We will now be bringing the Strategic Plan forward for your final review and endorsement in January. So, we get a lot of questions throughout the development of plans, and once it's released, about whether this is a corporate plan, or is it a community plan, or is it a hybrid of the two. And I want to make clear that this is a community-informed plan. It reflects what we heard from the community throughout that long engagement phase, and it is supported by staff expertise. So, we have a community vision, strategic direction, and pathways for the future of Durham over the next ten years, which again, reflects your direction at the beginning of the process to develop a plan that went beyond a five-year time horizon. The community will be consulted at the midpoint, so at 2030, to ensure that the plan is still reflective of community needs. Now, on the corporate side, we have certain regional commitments. The plan will act as a compass. We've been saying that since the beginning. Imagine your wayfinding, your compass acting as your overall direction to advance the work of this corporation for the next ten years, for both council and staff. Working along with our partners, businesses, and community members, this is about achieving the kind of future that individuals and groups told us that they want, the future of Durham that they want to live in in the next ten years. So, we are developing corporate implementation plans that will outline each of the specific initiatives that will be developed in order to advance the strategic direction and pathways. And these implementation plans will be shorter timelines to ensure flexibility, adaptability, and alignment with your annual business planning and budget process. We've also committed to reporting on a regular schedule. We're committed to demonstrating success and project and progress, and communicating these results throughout the entire duration of the plan. So, each year, you will see an update on to the, both the community and to this council, to share how we're advancing the directives. And we'll also continue to share that project progress very openly on the community dashboard, which was launched last year. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Leslie, who will take you through some of our engagement summary results.
Thank you, Sandra. So, to share a quick update on our engagement efforts earlier this year, in the spring, we implemented many components of the engagement plan with the goal of reaching and receiving feedback from as many residents across Durham Region as possible. So, we really wanted to get out there, talk to people, and hear what they envisioned for the future of the place that they live and work. So, some of the highlights are presented here on the screen. In March, there were over 8,400 website visits to the Your Durham page. Staff attended 24 pop-up events all across the region, resulting in approximately 900 face-to-face interactions and conversations with residents. So, at hockey rinks, recreation centers, libraries, those types of things. We delivered 13 presentations, including delegations to each of the eight local councils, reaching approximately 100 people in attendance. And as a result of all these engagement efforts, we were really happy to receive over 2,100 responses to the community survey. And that's roughly four times more than we received when we did the survey for the last Strategic Plan. We also launched, for the first time, an art contest for elementary and secondary school students to share their vision of the future for Durham Region. So, the theme was "Designing Our Future." And we received a total of 20 submissions that were featured in our social media platforms. And the accompanying explanations also went into the data analysis to inform the plan. You can see some examples here on the screen. In addition, we did internal engagement with staff at the region and leaders at the region to gather input. And we engaged with approximately 400 staff, including department heads, directors, managers, and frontline folks. Feedback was obtained from a variety of planning workshops, engagement sessions, and smaller discussions. All of the feedback received from the online survey, and the discussions with residents, went into informing additional community conversations that we held in May 2024, with approximately 49 community partners, 15 business representatives, and 20 youth leaders, who came out to talk to us about their vision for the future, the challenges we're facing today, and their ideas on how we might get to that future they desired. So, we use these conversations and the ideas generated to inform the plan, the draft plan that's before you. We had a total of 84 people attend these community conversations, and they represented altogether 47 organizations and groups across Durham Region. So, yes, as I mentioned, the information from all of these components of engagement were used to be summarized and create a thematic analysis that identifies the key issues and aspirations, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But they all went into designing the plan. So, on June 12th, we provided a report to Committee of the Whole. The purpose of the report was to share that summary of the engagement phase activities, as well as the preliminary themes that were identified. The report was subsequently accepted by Regional Council on June 26th. The full report can be found on the website at www.durham.ca/stratplan2025. But the following section that I'm going to go through provides you with kind of a highlight of the community consultation data. And again, those themes were drawn on to create the plan. So, the following defining characteristics, when we summarized it all up, are the defining characteristics of life in Durham Region that community identified that they really appreciated. Access to nature, including parks, trails, waterfronts, and green space; a mix of rural and urban spaces; an overall sense of safety; diverse and inclusive communities, welcoming communities; unique local industries, including agriculture, energy, and small businesses, were identified. Based on the analysis of all that community consultation data that I spoke of, we then clustered and grouped the key issues identified for Durham Region today, and they're shown here, and I'll quickly just read out the themes. So, we heard about cost of living, rapid growth, infrastructure, community well-being, safety, service delivery, transit, health services, leadership, community connection, climate change impacts, and technology. We also heard about the community's aspirations for the region. So, these are the hopeful futures that people told us about, and we grouped and clustered those themes as well. So, they are shown here as adapting to growth, service delivery, supports for vulnerable populations, environmental protection and sustainability, mobility options, business and employment, technology and innovation, civic engagement, public space, and recreation and leisure. So, both the issues and the aspirations were used together as inputs to draft up the regional Strategic Plan. If you would like to read further about the results of what we heard, we really encourage you to visit the Your Durham website at www.durham.ca/stratplan2025, where you can access the full report. Okay, so, we're really pleased to share with you today that the draft Strategic Plan is available for public review. From now until October 27th, you'll have received some information, as Counselor Crawford mentioned, in the CIP that went out last week on Friday. So, you can access the draft plan. And we really hope that you'll take some time to review the draft and provide your input. And to support your review, we wanted to share some context on how to read the draft plan. So, looking at the parallelogram on the left, this is really the vision statement, the strategic directions and pathways, as Sandra talked about. This is all based on the feedback we received from community. So, we think about this as the where we're going, kind of what we heard, people, where they want to go. The parallelogram on the right includes the corporate mission, values, and the implementation plans that are the specific commitments of the region of Durham to help advance us in those directions that we heard from the community. So, think of this as the how we're going to get there, and what the organization will contribute. We also wanted to share some context on the proposed strategic directions. The draft Strategic Plan reflects what we heard from community members through the engagement phase, including their ideas on how we would get to that future, and how we would move towards it together. Shown here are the proposed strategic directions that will move us towards that vision of a more connected, caring, and welcoming communities that respect the natural environment and create that prosperity for all. So, the draft 2025 Strategic Plan is now available on Your Durham web, on the Your Durham webpage. And I'll turn it back to Sandra for opportunities to engage.
Thanks very much, Leslie, for that overview. So, mark your calendars. From now, October 9th up till the 27th, everyone is invited to review the draft Strategic Plan and provide comments through Your Durham. So, this is really an opportunity for staff, partners, businesses, community members, and members of council to all review the plan and provide comments. And in addition, we're hosting a couple of open houses to have those in-person conversations. The first open house will be on October 23rd. You will all be here, as it is a Regional Council Day. The open houses will take place here at headquarters outside of council chambers. On that day, people are free to drop by any time between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and then in the evening between 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. And thanks to advisory feedback, we were able to add a second open house in North Durham the next day, on October 24th, at the Skugog Community Recreation Center. And we will host that between 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock p.m. So, again, this is an opportunity to walk through the draft Strategic Plan, ask questions of staff, provide comments. And any final revisions to the draft Strategic Plan will be made at that point in preparation for our presentation to council in January. So, with that, I'd like to say thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today. If you do have any questions, we are happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have questions. First is Counselor Neil.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess my questions are, in regards to climate and environmental protection, there was a number of gaps at the last Works Committee in regards to the EMEA testing, et cetera, for the York Durham incinerator. How's that going to be addressed? And in the comments section, come from the public, and so on and so forth? Or is the Works Committee going to go back and provide more information to the public before that happens? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Neil, for the question. Yes, Leslie mentioned that climate action, environmental sustainability, is prominently featured throughout the plan. And we do have, within the implementation components, the aspects with respect to regional emissions, including waste management practices that are, are being incorporated in terms of those specific initiatives. So, that, that input has been considered.
Okay, and the other thing is the safety of the community. Like, I'm missing a police station in North Oshawa. The people are still moving in. I don't have that. And the other thing is cybersecurity. Is this all in the, in the safety of the community part that you're mentioning, or is that going to be broken down further, et cetera?
So, on the police station, Counselor Neil, that is something that the Police Services Board will have to bring to this council. That's a conversation you can have with them at the next opportunity. And on the second question?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Counselor, for the question. Yes, with respect to cybersecurity, there are elements of technology, and as well as community safety, recognizing that cyber plays an increasingly large role in overall public safety.
Okay, and then the infrastructure part, like, infrastructure has to keep up with growth. And what I previously mentioned about the police day, I consider that infrastructure. But the other stuff like roads, Harmony Road and that, that are way beyond use now, and there's still more people moving in every day. Is that going to be part of it? Because I know I'm hearing it, along with the taxes. So, how's that going to be addressed through public input still?
Certainly, Counselor, that is, those are big themes that we did hear throughout the year and a bit of public engagement. And so, you'll see them reflected in terms of ensuring connected and vibrant neighborhoods, taking that proactive and responsible approach to growth and infrastructure, ensuring that our regional infrastructure and our asset management is aligned to projected growth, as well as climate impacts and community needs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for the excellent presentation.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next presentation, item 4.2, Christine Wilmot, Manager of Employment Services, System Income Employment and Home Wellness Supports Division. Good morning. Just one second. Your, your microphone's not on yet. There you go.
Okay, we're off to a great start. Good morning, Chair Henry and members of council. I'd like to thank you for the opportunities to present today. I'm excited to provide you with an update on the work that we've been doing as the Service System Manager of Employment Services. In 2019, the Government of Ontario announced the Employment Services Transformation. As part of the transformation, the new service delivery model would integrate Social Assistance Employment Services into Employment Ontario, which is funded by the Ministry of Labor, Immigration, Training, and Skills Development. This new model would be administered by a Service System Manager, known as an SSM. The purpose of this model is to enhance Employment Services better addressing the needs of job seekers, businesses, and communities more effectively. Beginning in 2019, the competition to become an SSM was launched in a phased rollout approach across the province, beginning with three prototype areas. Moving forward to 2023, after a multi-staged competitive bidding process, the Durham Region Employment Services Consortium was awarded as the Service System Manager for Durham. The consortium is led by the region of Durham and includes the Durham Workforce Authority and Durham College. The new integrated model was launched January 2024, following an extensive planning period. The planning period, which took place from May to December 2023, involved a mixed methods evaluation that included a comprehensive analysis of the following three categories. The first was document review. A network-wide system evaluation was completed using various data collection methods from the previous four years to assess the viability of the existing service delivery network. The second looked at quantitative data. We analyzed the data, determined benchmark statistics, and identified patterns, trends, and outliers. The analysis allowed us to look at the performance of individual service providers, as well as compare their data to the average of the network and the province. We were able to identify the strengths and areas of improvement of each service provider, and measure their current performance against the new service delivery model. The next step was evaluation, of evaluation, was performing a qualitative analysis. We conducted surveys, service provider consultations, community consultations, a service provider questionnaire, and a risk assessment. Worth noting, it was important to us to engage with community organizations serving those who were furthest from the labor market. All of these steps helped inform and drive the transformation of the system, and assisted with the program design. During the consultations, we gathered valuable input and feedback on the development of the vision, mission, and core values for us as the Service System Manager. Engaging with the community was a priority for us. Subsequently, the SSM refined the vision, mission, and core values to effectively guide the network in the delivery of the integrated Employment Services Network. Another component developed early in the process of program design was our governance model. These committees are to assist with realizing our system values of accountability, transparency, and continuous improvement. This governance model aims to have participants collaborating to identify local priorities, maximize opportunities, and enhance effectiveness. As you can see here, we have five committees that are in different stages currently of development. The SSM is centered on an approach to service delivery that meets the needs of equity-deserving individuals who have been historically excluded from the labor market due to systemic barriers. Evidence-based measures were utilized by the SSM in order to identify organizational targets for each service provider that was equitable in distribution and reflective of our community needs. Geographic information mapping exercises were used to gain information on the service provider locations relative to the priority demographic factors, such as low-income prevalence, priority health neighborhoods, and population density in Durham Region. The design of a new funding model resulted in increased funding for 80% of the service providers in the network, marking their first increase in over a decade. The funding formula ensures equity across the network. Funding for the network also consists of a performance-based framework and lends additional capacity to support individuals at high risk for long-term employment, unemployment. With regards to assigning organizational targets, we utilized the information gathered from the needs assessment and collaborated with the existing 12 service providers to assign, assign their organizational targets and key performance indicators. Through these methods, we aimed to provide additional capacity to serve clients while maintaining operational funding stability for the service provider network during the first 15 months of the integrated employment service delivery. The existing complement of 12 employment service providers in Durham Region was fully retained during the transition process through successful service agreements contracted by the SSM. From the 12 service providers, we have 19 locations, including five itinerant sites, widely distributed across the Durham Region. Through the transformation, we also enhanced service accessibility by adding itinerant sites in Orano, Newcastle, and Cannington. As I've mentioned, our program design focused on supporting individuals who are furthest from the labor market. The key performance indicators we are measured on, established by the ministry, highlights several equity-deserving populations, including individuals with disabilities, ODSP recipients, indigenous peoples, Black and racialized individuals, youth with higher support needs, and newcomers. As the SSM, we are implementing specialized supports for our service providers to assist with unique needs of the clients. We have established a partnership with Canadian Mental Health Association to build capacity within the system. CMHA provides two mental health employment support consultants who work collaboratively with the network through the delivery of mental health consultations, referrals, group facilitation, and information sessions to help support clients with mental health concerns, find and maintain competitive employment. In addition, the SSM will be hiring an indigenous support worker to support the capacity of the network. This individual will provide culturally relevant training, support, and recommendations to service providers, and support to indigenous clients. Alongside the base operating funds, the SSM invited service providers to submit expression of interest to receive specialized funds in order to deliver enhanced services to the previously mentioned inclusion groups. These initiatives were informed by community needs and identified gaps. Examples of enhanced services include computer literacy for newcomers, employment workshops for indigenous clients, and youth pre-employment programs. Digital enhancements include the development of the Employment Services Microsite, the creation of a SharePoint Drive for the network, the procurement of a case management system, and the purchase of career development tools. Network development has been a key focus for the SSM. Extensive staff training and development has been provided to the network in order to advance system capacity improvements. And training will continue to be an ongoing strategy. Collaboration is also ongoing. The SSM engages in bi-weekly meetings with the service providers as a regu, as a regular rotation as well. And then meet, we also meet with SSMs across Ontario to share best practices and collaborate on challenges. In addition, collaboration with social assistance has also been a key focus for an effective integrated employment system model. To share some early data, this graph represents the period of Octo, or April 1st to June 30th, 2024, which is the first quarter of the ministry's fiscal. During this time, the SSM achieved 101% of the client intake target. As indicated on this slide, we are exceeding our commitments to serving clients from the inclusion groups mentioned earlier. The SSM continues to monitor and evaluate the performance of Employment Service Providers and the entire network as a whole on a regular basis. The ministry measures are outcome success at the client three-month follow-up mark. With the program recently launching, achieving outcomes at the three-month mark are slow to acquire, as expected. At the end of the first quarter, 579 clients received Employment Services and achieved an outcome of employed, working 20 hours or more at by, at three, the three-month mark. We've been providing the network with focused strategic job development training, as well as strategizing with our Communications and Engagement Division and Economic Development to establish relationships with employers and industry. As our network capacity increases, we will continue to see our outcomes increase. Also worth noting, between January to June 2024, a total of 3,800 social assistance clients were referred to Employment Services. These numbers demonstrate the promise of an effective, integrated employment service system. And we recognize we still have work to do, and I look forward to sharing more of our success in the future. As the SSM, we are beginning, becoming actively engaged with both the community and the employer sector. You'll sector. You'll find here a list of events or meetings that we presented at, and these events will be essential for our continued success of our delivery model. Another important update to share is regarding the integration of social assistance clients into Employment Ontario. This includes several key elements worth highlighting, the first being the Common Assessment Tool developed by the ministry. This is central to the integrated model and consists of two modules. It is a digital questionnaire used by social assistance and employment service staff and entails the assessment of client strengths, barriers to employment, and support needs in order to facilitate appropriate service planning and referrals to employment service providers. Collaboration and coordination among all delivery partners is crucial under this model, ensuring shared accountability for achieving positive employment outcomes for social assistance clients. And in order to facilitate coordination, the SSM created a referral and benefit guidelines in collaboration with ODSP, OW, and our employment service providers. The SSM is also fostering communication, collaboration, and engagement through ongoing meetings, case conferencing, and information gathering to further advance our integrated efforts. Finally, the SSM has conducted training and information sessions for all of our partners and has developed a comprehensive training strategy set to be implemented in November. We have identified several key priorities and subsequent actions that will be essential for our continued success as the SSM. We've been collaborating with Bawa Jagewa and Aboriginal Community Circle, and we're prioritizing the hiring of the indigenous support worker. Stakeholder engagement is a key priority as working with community organizations and employers is central to our program mission, vision, and values. Strengthening the relationship between social assistance and employment services, fostering greater collaboration, is vital for our streamlined referral process and integrated client supports. Ongoing training and development opportunities to strengthen the capacity of the network remains to be a key priority. And lastly, the SSM plans to expand marketing efforts and increase exposure of local employment services using various promotional strategies such as social media, the Microsite, and event participation. I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to present today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from members of council? Seeing none, excellent presentation. Oh, councillor Wu, push your button, please.
Yeah, excuse me, through the chair, and thank you very much, Christine. Just wanted to mention about the SSM and the work that you are doing and the, I guess, part with the Durham Workforce Authority, Durham College. And I can say, more personally, my granddaughter has used the Durham College Employment Services in Bowmanville.
Oh, wonderful.
And been very helpful. I just wanted to mention, too, that I'm looking at all these acronyms and the big one, Ministry of Labor, Immigration, Training and Skills Development. And Minister David Pacini, and thank you very much, Chair Henry. Minister Pacini presented at the Clarette Board of Trade Breakfast, and thank you for your attendance. I know Durham College was there, and I think we did have staff from Durham Region here there, and it was encouraging. I guess the question I want to bring up, as we're trying to get people that are on the unemployment, collecting social services, some of the jobs that are out there, it'd be nice if they could all get into those high-paying jobs and skilled trades. It takes a while, but even at those minimum wage jobs, how are people still being able to cope today with the cost of living? Just to feed themselves or put a roof over their head?
So, on that part, I don't think that's a fair question to ask a staff member. Would you like me to comment?
Sure.
The challenges that young people are having in today's society are complicated and expensive, and that, as we've been advocating, there needs to be a conversation with the other levels of government to sit down and say, how do we make it better today, but how do we make it better thirty years from today for the young people who live in our country? So, Christine, if you want to comment on that question, feel free.
I'd be happy to, through the chair. One of the strategies as well we're also looking at is the education of employers. So I know the job developers in our network, I mentioned in the presentation, we've provided them with a lot of training, but really educating those employers. We hear from them, they're having a hard time hiring, so educating them as well in the sense of you need to look at what you're offering as a salary, what more can you provide to support those clients? So there's that education piece that we plan to address and work on through the one committee in our governance model, the Employer and Industry Committee as well. So there is lots of work to do, for sure, but we're looking forward to addressing that.
And councillor Wu, you have been part of the, this council's strategic investments in education with Ontario Tech Durham College and Trent, investments in Lake Ridge Health, Queens at Lake Ridge Health, how each of the eight municipalities have been able to attract businesses to their community. And in fairness, unlike some other communities, we're still building houses right now at this time in Durham region. So congratulations to the mayors and councils in your communities for continuing to make that, but investing in our education and healthcare is really making us at the forefront of job attraction.
Well, thank you, Christine, and thank you to your team for all the good work that you're doing, and thank you for those comments, Chair Henry. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that exhausts the questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Members of council, we're going to move on to, there are no delegations, no correspondence. We're going to move on to reports. First report, seven point one, 2024, is the revision of the seat in Phase One Regional Infrastructure Fundending Agreement. It's located on page thirty-seven of your agenda. Can I get someone to move the report? Moved by councillor Chapman, seconded by councillor Wu. So the report is now on the floor. Online, Mr. Quirk? Seeing none? Okay, in that case, I will call the vote on the recommendation. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. We'll move on to, sorry, report seven point two, Transfer Payment Agreement with the Province of Ontario to Support the Helicopter Procurement for Air Support. It's located on page forty-six, or forty-nine of your agenda. Move the recommendation, Mayor Carter, seconded by councillor Yamada. The item is now on the floor. Mayor Carter, did you want to speak to that, or you're just happy to get it on the floor?
I just wanted to make sure we got this.
I got it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this? Seeing none on the report. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Next report is Cal forty-three, Recommended Amendments to the Delegation Authority Bylaws, located on page forty-nine of your agenda. Could I get a mover, please? Councillor Shahid, seconded by Mayor Watten. The report is now on the floor. Okay, seeing none online. In that case, I'm going to call the vote on the report. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Members, there are a series of motions starting on page fifty-three of your agenda. Sorry, give me one second, please. So the first motion is moved by councillor Shahid and Mayor Roy. It's a fairly long motion. I think if it's okay with the mover and the seconder, maybe we could just read from the last paragraph down, where is the federal government?
Thank you, Chair Henry. I believe everybody should have that in their dockets, and I could read it, however. I just wish to say a few words on this and requesting members of council and their support. So with that, I'm just going to take the floor and be very quick with this. I'm pleased to share these motions. They were passed as resolutions by the FCM Conference in Calgary. The endorsement of these motions by FCM underscores the national significance of these issues, all of them, all four motions, on its entirety, and it's crucial that this council, at the regional level, will lend our hand for support. These issues directly affect our communities, and we've talked about this often and in almost every council meeting, and your endorsement will send a strong message within our community's stance for protecting the most vulnerable among us. So I'm going to start with the IPV motion that we see in front.
We're dealing with them one at a time.
Yeah, so that's the first one, Chair Henry, if that's okay. So I bring forward this motion to address the nationwide crisis of intimate partner violence affecting more than six point two million women, over four in ten and one in three men, and the rate of increases over nineteen percent between 2014 and 2022, with seventy-eight percent of police reported victims being women and girls, and indigenous women specifically are three times more likely to experience IPV and eight times more likely to be murdered by a partner, unfortunately. And women in rural areas face seventy-five percent higher risk than those in urban regions. This motion calls for federal government to create a permanent fund for the construction of shelters and transitional housing, particularly for indigenous women, people, and the two SLG, TBQIA plus people, and those in rural areas, along with ongoing operational fundings for these facilities. By supporting this motion, we can help ensure the survivors of IPV have access to safe housing and critical support they need, and I urge for this entire council's support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Roy is the seconder, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you very much.
I just push you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to support this, and I know previously a lot of our local councils, but also this council, has given support towards this as well, too. And I think that every day that we keep talking about this crisis just gets more and more worse. Locally here, within our own community, we can see our own women's shelters that are struggling to have the support. We see the expansion of Denise House, which we shouldn't be looking at expansion of housing for women in situations of such. We should be looking at remedies to give support to help women come out of the situations that they are in. In the last three weeks, we have seen two incidences of violence take place where a partner has either harmed and killed their spouse, their girlfriend, and this is within our own community here within Durham, and I think we need to stand strong to give the support to those who are experiencing this within our own community.
Thank you. Councillor Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ajax held a roundtable for, we had all of the Durham nonprofit groups that deal with intimate partner violence. Sadly, the room was full because there is such a need, and there are so many people out there trying to help women. And the theme that really came out of this is they are insulted by the fact that the government requires them to come up with new initiatives in order to get more money. The initiative that they're doing is good enough to have permanent funding, and that is what they need to have. They need to have stability, they need to have permanent funding, grant opportunities should be one-offs, they shouldn't be how they fund their program. They don't have the manpower, and I know the government has said that they have given money to this particular project, but if you speak with, I've spoken to many of them individually, victim services alone laughed at me when I said that because they applied for that funding, and it was so small that they couldn't afford to hire someone with that kind of salary. So while there is money out there, the need is great, and it needs to be permanent, stable funding for these organizations. The other thing that they're talking about is that when money is given out, the government needs to vet who's getting the money, because they need to make sure that the people that are working with these individuals are not just pop-ups that just, you know, happen to pop up and have an initiative, and therefore they get the money where they've got organizations that have been working, you know, tirelessly that will not get the funding because they don't have the resources to come up with a new thing. So I think that's a really important piece, and I absolutely hold heartedly support this, and I think it's shameful that we have to even think about housing for these women. I don't think that they should be put out. I think that their partner, or whoever it is that is causing the issue, is the one that should be put out, not the families. Anyway, my grandstand and soapbox is over. Thank you.
Comments are appreciated. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this motion forward, and I believe councillor Roy touched on it, that it was very close to home last week in Curtis. A mother and daughter was murdered right in their own home with an infant in the room as well. And why is it close to home? My son went to Holy Trinity with the daughter and with her brother, and to make things worse, at seventeen, a sister also died while in school under tragic circumstances. So this motion is, I guess, timely, and it's unfortunate that this still exists in our society, and it seems to tie to socioeconomic condition as the economy and unemployment gets worse, it increases, which is no justification for that, or that should be tolerated in any circumstances, and we have to do as a society all we can to try and maybe, if not eradicate, make sure that we protect those who are, we're able to, by providing shelter and making sure resources are there for this, and we're all in this, not just the federal government, all levels of government has a role to play in this. So again, thank you so much for bringing this forward, and you have my full support. Thank you.
Councillor Pickles?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I was just reminded of when councillor Anderson was speaking that we were fairly recently at a fundraiser for Denise House, and Horizon House is often the recipient of support from our community as well. I will be strongly supporting the motion. It's sadly, very sadly, necessary. I would just suggest, if appropriate, and I don't know if it's a friendly amendment or an amendment, but it might be appropriate to copy the motion to all of our federal MPs in the region and perhaps provincial MPPs and whatever ministers' staff might deem appropriate to share our motion. And that probably applies to the subsequent motions we have as well today, given that they speak to getting the attention of the federal and provincial government representatives.
I accept that as a friendly.
Thank you.
Councillor Leahy?
Thank you, Chair, and of course, it's a pleasure to be with you all here on my birthday and speak about these important issues. Thank you, thank you. So yeah, fully supportive of all this and all the motions that are on the floor. This is an extremely important topic and something that we really should be asking other levels of government for commitment and to get permanent funding for all areas in this thing. We desperately need permanent fundling. That is always a challenge to get these things, there's constant needs for fundraising, and fully support that. The one thing I'd like to also add is we could potentially copy all local area municipalities as well as a potential friendly, because I know not every of them have passed these motions that have come up from FCM, so I'm wondering if we could do that as well?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Fully supportive and appreciate the opportunity to speak, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Macawee.
Thank you, Chair, good morning. This is timely, given, you know, our recent events in the area. I wonder if we can have a discussion, you know, about what we can do regionally with this. It's great that we're going to send this off to federal and provincial governments and ask for help, but I think a lot of this is communication, and, you know, a lot of this is, you know, when these sorts of things- this is, you know, when these sorts of things happen and they're in the news, we often wonder, did this, let's say, woman know that she could reach out? And did she know how she could reach out and where she can get the help? And oftentimes, we don't know that they need help until after. And I think that it's a communications expedition, perhaps, that we should look at internally, maybe working in conjunction with DRPS. I think it's worth exploring, and I'm hoping that that can be taken as a friendly, and maybe the CAO has something she can add. I see you talking over there.
Okay. Thank you, and I appreciate the question. And I just leaned over to our CAO. I know that Counselor Wu has some comments that the mayor had sent him. I think he was copied on what I was. It's going to ask some questions to our staff related to this. So not to take away from Counselor Wu's thunder, but I, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to read what Mayor Foster has sent. So Mayor Foster is representing us in Calgary, in Edmonton, sorry, on an important nuclear issue. But early this morning, he sent a message in that it would, the question was, I would urge committee to consider asking staff at the region as well as their local municipalities to consider what the tangible steps we can take to help victims of IPV. Amongst our own staff, we are surrounded by hundreds of victims who are suffering silently and need to help. And then he makes a reference to Renfrew County. So through the question, I'm going to give some direction to our CAO that, could you prepare for us a list of things that we do here at the region? And at the first opportunity, send it out as a memo to all members of council on all the things that are available. And then in his motion, or his question to me today is that you should do this within your own municipalities as well. So we'll take that question from you through Mayor Foster and Counselor Wu's direction to staff. And pardon? And the CAO would like to speak.
Thank you through you, Chair Henry, and sorry to jump in. I just wanted to let council know that through our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Office, we are applying for gender-based violence funding through the province to begin an advocacy campaign. So as part of this memo, we will certainly give you more information on that. Thank you.
Counselor Mulcahy?
Thank you so much for that. I think that a lot of our victims suffer in silence, and we need to reach out to them. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dice?
Thank you. I agree that this is a horrible situation that has increased through the pandemic. We saw many acts of violence in the home because people were, had nowhere to go, basically. But it's been around a very, very long time, and we don't seem to be able to address this as the needs arise. And it's a very frustrating situation. And as Counselor Anderson said, there are impacts in all of our communities. And one personal with a friend of mine who lost a daughter to violence with her boyfriend, leaving two sons behind, and I can tell you that it's a devastating impact that the family will never get over. And this has gone on for generations and generations. And yet, we don't see an increase in housing for them. This is a big problem, I know, across Canada now. But for years now, we haven't seen any increase in funding and very little increase in any type of safe housing for them. And these women often have children with them, and the impacts on the children are huge, too, throughout a lifetime, depending on how long they've been in that household where the abuse was happening. So, you know, I think we need to work a little bit harder and maybe think a little bit outside the box. I'm pleased to hear the staff's moving forward on that, and I look forward to hearing some different initiatives going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wu?
I apologize for taking your thunder.
No, thank you very much, Chair Henry. You framed that quite well. I did have a discussion with Mayor Foster, and he would be here, if he were here, he would be speaking very passionately about this. I think every municipality in Durham Region did pass, and I think that was from supporting the EMO, which Resolution about intimate partner violence, which brought back by Counselor Crawford and Mulcahy. But again, you know, the recommendations from the Renfrew, the 30 recommendations, and I think part and parcel is, we're asking someone else to fix this problem. And I think that was framed, and this motion, and I understand it does start, and everybody has to be part and parcel, you know, from the federal, provincial, but somehow, and thank you very much, what are we doing at this level? So I appreciate what CAO did say. But I also, we are supportive of this council, you know, whether it be just recently, Take Back the Night, then we also have, and Chair Henry, you're there, the Community Walk to End Intimate Partner Violence. And coming up, you know, and this is a shameless plug because we don't have announcements, Victim Services of Durham Region are holding their first gala, Resilient Voices Gala, November 9th, 6/9 at Deer Creek. So, you know, these things, when you look at these organizations, and they're starving for funding, too, but they're there, like the Victim Service Durham Region, they're there 24/7, 365, answering the calls. And Take Back the Night, I can remember, they're saying, silence no more. And it can be silence no more. You've got to speak up. Mayor Foster has mentioned also, you know, Bethesda House, we have the women's shelter in Clarendon in Bowmanville, and it's an 18-bed shelter. And I was lucky enough to be on that committee back in 2000, when we built that shelter. And wouldn't it be nice that there are no more women, women and family, women, family and their pets going to these shelters? But unfortunately, not the case. And I think what we were speaking about earlier, Denise House, they're building a new facility and expanding it. And that just shows us the times that we're in. It's not going away. But we have to be there to support those that are being affected by this. So thank you very much for my rant.
Thank you. Counselor Crawford, we're in the committee hall, but we go around, and it would be your second speaking, so I'm going to go to Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Chair Henry. Thank you to my colleagues who are raising this and bringing this forward. It is incredibly important. And I also like just to take an opportunity to thank all of the staff, both at the region and on committee, and those staff who work at all of our facilities to support women. Most recently, in Pickering, my dear friend had to flee a week ago to a shelter after being unable to find support through the appropriate channels, filing a police report, getting on the list to get support of housing. It's a crisis, and it affects families, our communities. And this is just a shout-out to the kindness and empathy shown by everyone at the region who works to resolve these issues with our women and our family in the community. And I just didn't want to lose sight of the goodness that is already in place. Clearly, we need more support and more resources, but these people are to be commended for the patience and empathy that they show, the women who show up on their doorstep in their circumstances. Thank you for that. And I will obviously be supporting this important motion.
Thank you. Counselor Brenner?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo what all members have said and to really stress that the need to ensure, I mean, there is kindness out there from our staff and the agencies. But as Counselor Cook alluded to, and I'm familiar with that particular case as well, the problem is that the victims really don't know what's available. And I think it was wonderful, in the case in Pickering recently, we were able to reach out and do the linkages that were necessary. But I'm looking forward to the suggestions of our CAO and what can happen in terms of our outreach strategy to educate the public and the victims in particular, to make them much more self-confident, to be able to reach out in a timely fashion, to get the help they need before, unfortunately, that there is a tragedy.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Brenner?
Yep, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Crawford?
Thank you for letting me back in. I was wondering if this motion could be also sent to all the nonprofits that deal with intimate partner violence? Is that possible? That we know of, anyway, in Durham Region? And also, I just wanted to mention, I sent the link to our CAO and to Sandra Austin. Hamilton has done some really good work with this, and they've done a program called Safe at Home, Hamilton. It's a website that has exactly all the information that somebody might be looking for when in a situation of trying to leave, with links and suggestions and technology, you know, safety, technology issues. Like, it's a really good, comprehensive website that I feel like every municipality has a responsibility. We all have residents that are facing this. Death in this situation is the outcome of ongoing abuse that's been going on. So that is what happens at the very end, but that doesn't preclude everything that's been going on for a lifetime. So the website is a really good website. We are looking at it in Ajax, and I think that, yes, as Durham Region and Health, Social Services and all that stuff, we have responsibility. But I think each municipality also has that same responsibility. So I'm done.
Okay, Madam CAO, you'll be able to look at those websites?
Yes, we certainly will, and we'll include our findings in the memo. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
I'm just going to ask for a recorded vote on this one.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Record a vote. I see no others in requests to speak. I'll call the recorded vote now, then, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the motion is starting now.
It's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to 8.2, motion requesting immediate federal government support for asylum claimants in municipalities. Moved by Counselor Shahid and seconded by Mayor Roy. Counselor Shahid, this is, again, a fairly long, detailed motion. All members of council have it, but you can read it in the record if you think you need to, but you can speak to it.
Through you, Chair Henry. I'm not going to read the motion. I'm just going to talk about it with your permission here, and I won't be too long. I just want to emphasize on the fact that municipalities, especially us in the GTA, are facing immense pressure due to the rising number of asylum claimants. Without immediate federal support, these individuals will be left without stable housing and essential services. And the current housing and the homeless crisis is beyond unbelievable numbers, right? So what is happening right now, we've talked about this as well, and we talked about the CCD, CCDC funding as well, and the fact that what are we going to do about it, right? Many of whom belong, these, all these asylum seekers and the ones who've made those claims and are living here, and they belong to the equity-deserving communities. They face significant challenges related to racism, discrimination, particularly anti-black racism. The federal government must provide immediate financial assistance to municipalities and develop a long-term strategy through collaboration with local and provincial governments. The motion calls for expanding federally-funded settlement services to include asylum claimants and urge the extension of the Rapid Housing Initiative to create more supportive housing options. This would help relieve the pressure on shelters and provide more permanent solutions for those who are seeking refuge in Canada. So supporting this motion is essential today to ensuring municipalities have resources to offer stable housing and support to vulnerable population, helping create inclusive and welcoming communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Roy is the second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the mover of this motion for bringing this forward. And I know that this discussion has been had, both through our Health and Social Services here at our council chambers as well, too. But I think that we need to recognize, again, and I know that Counselor Cook recognized the work of our staff, but a year ago, a year and a half ago, we ended up in a situation in the June-July time period where we had a number of asylum seekers coming into our community, and how our staff have stepped up to give the support to be able to find the housing. We're doing our jobs, and we're helping to ensure for our community to have housing in place. But the other is, and as you have said yourself, Chair Henry, is that we need to all collectively be working together. But we also need to have the supports from the federal government in order to have the housing to be put into place and to stop having to have the local taxpayers to pay for the cost of the work that should be done at other levels of government. And I'm glad to see it here, and I'm glad to see that we can push it forward further, and hopefully, we can have further discussions and to push this. But we have a bill that needs to be paid, and it's the taxpayers of our community that deserve this.
Counselor Neal?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Do we have statistics and numbers and everything like that compiled?
Yes, we have currently, as asylum seekers, we have 433 individuals and 280 families.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this motion? Record a vote. Record a vote. And just before I call the vote, last year, our staff did an amazing job in a very short period of time. And remember, the Durham Region didn't see an asylum seeker until 2022, in June, I believe. We were always told, my understanding is that we would always be made whole. And last year, we were not made whole. We were, we received 96% of the funding, but that 4% of funding equated to $1 million that we didn't receive. I'm going by memory, so I apologize, but I'm pretty sure I'm right. A recorded vote called by Mayor, so that means the federal government shorted us $1 million. Mayor Carter?
Just because you brought the made whole, I think we should request what that meaning really means from the government and what their interpretation is. So just a suggestion.
I appreciate your humor this morning. Thank you. Recorded vote was called by Mayor Carter. I'll call that vote now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the motion is starting now.
It's unanimous, that carries. Motion 8.3, or item 8.3, motion to request federal government support for food banks. This is on page 57 of your agenda, moved by Counselor Shahid, seconded by Mayor Roy. Counselor Shahid?
Thank you through you, Chair Henry. I'm not going to read the motion, however. I will speak on it. We all know we are facing a deepening crisis of food insecurity across our country, driven by skyrocketing mortgage and rent costs, inflated grocery prices and stagnant wages. These pressures are pushing more and more people, especially those on fixed incomes like seniors and social assistants, recipients towards food banks as a last resort. Even those who once donated to the food banks, and I see that all the time, find themselves relying on these services. The alarming data from Food Banks Canada shows 80% increase in food bank usage since 2019, with nearly 2 million Canadians seeking help as of March 2023. This increase is unsustainable, and yet, federal government This increase is unsustainable, and yet federal government no longer provides ongoing support for food banks, relaying instead of community donations which are themselves declining due to financial strain on our donors. This motion calls on federal government to provide emergency funding for food banks, food rescue agencies and farmer markets, offering emergency food assistance. I urge all of your support, this motion, to ensure that those most vulnerable in our communities have access to the food and support they need, and I think Mayor Roy will can reflect more of what is happening here within our community. Thank you.
Mayor Roy?
Thank you once again, Mr. Chair, and to the mover of the motion, and there is a 2023 Hunger Report that comes from Feed the Need that has really captured what is happening within our community, really in 2023, but not reflective of what we are at today. And I know that the numbers where we have seen from 2022 to 2023, fifty-one percent of an increase within our own community within Durham. We are also seeing that one in four food bank users are first-time users as well, too. We have seen an abundance of over fifteen thousand residents, residents, that have accessed our food bank for the first time in the past year. We have at the Town of Whitby, the Mayor's Development Community Fund, and predominantly the number of requests have been made for food insecurity. On a regular basis, we're seeing from our food banks, and I've held now going on to the third roundtable of our food banks, of where we can give support, and ultimately, it is, it's not only about the reflection of the cost, but it's the ability of what they're able to give out, and where they used to be able to give two bags of food to a user, they're now only to do, able to give one bag. We're hearing from our own Salvation Army on a regular basis of their shelves are empty. From Feed the Need, we've partnered with them, and we established within Iroquois Park a pantry access, which means that individuals who are employed within our community have access to a food bank with dignity, where they're able to select their items that they require. We had started this just within this past year. We have had on Thursday hundreds residents that are able to access in that time period. We are now looking at a second time opportunity to open up the space, just because there's such a demand on the access to this. I know our food banks are struggling, and as we go into this weekend of Thanksgiving, and we are thankful for what we have within our own homes, I think we also need to reflect of how we can give and support to those who are in need at this point in time, and it could possibly be your neighbor. I attended to the Salvation Army within the past month and to their food bank visitation, and there were individuals that I personally knew that were accessing the food bank, embarrassed to see me present there, to greet and to work with them, but ultimately, we can't be judgmental as to who may have to access. There's a lot of people struggling in our community.
Thank you. Mayor Carter, you were on my screen and then off my screen, so, okay, we'll go to Counselor Chapman.
We're kind of a team here. So, I have an amendment. I have, I can send it in if you want, but what I would like to do is, after the words "providing emergency funding," to insert the words "for the purchase of food products." And Mayor Carter's prepared to second that.
To the, can I ask if they'll just accept that?
That's fine, too.
Okay, so the mover and seconder accept that?
Where we're going with this is that providing emergency funding, we know how upper levels of government do funding, and we just heard from Counselor Crawford when she talked about the money going to the right people for I P V, right? And that there's people that stand up that, well, we want the money to go to food products that can be distributed to those people that need it, and not to buy a new truck, get a, hire another driver, those types of things. We actually want it to be spent on, on food products by these folks, and I think the legitimate, maybe I shouldn't use that word legitimate, but some of the food banks will do that. They'll take the money and spend it the proper way, but I'm sort of fearful that others might not, unless there's a, some kind of proviso on it when the money comes down from the, whatever level of government. Thank you.
Just a question. Counselor Chapman, would you, on, on what you've proposed that was taken as a friendly, add the term "locally sourced"? So, the goods, the money that comes into the community is used to buy goods within the community to support the businesses within the communities? Where possible?
Yeah, that, I mean, that is excellent, and we want to support the local thing there, but I'm also looking at, you know, can they get bigger deals from buying from a larger company or something like that? So, I, I think that needs to be a first option, but not the only option.
So, the mover and seconder, locally sourced where?
Possible.
Where possible. To the mover?
Yeah.
The seconder, Mayor Roy? Okay, accept it.
Yeah, so they start there, but in some cases, some of the products might be, they may get twice as many, coming from someplace outside of, you know, the other side of Toronto, which isn't necessarily considered locally sourced, right?
So, Mr. Clerk, you'll put the proper wording in? Okay. To the, to the motion, Counselor Yamada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just taking a look at the motion, the numbers are staggering. When you see that Food Banks Canada's report saying that food banks across the country were visited nearly two million times in March of that year alone, in 2023, an increase of seventy-nine percent from 2019. Recently, the Second Harvest Charity reported that the problem will only get worse, projecting an expected eighteen percent increase in demand this year, which translates into another million people having to rely on food banks to survive. On top of this, thirty-six percent of non-for-profits feeding the hungry reported having to turn away people from their facilities because they simply couldn't keep up with demand. And so, when, when I think about the issues that are facing people, and, and the cost of groceries continues to be one of the main ones that I hear when I'm out talking to people in our community, and last March, the Durham Agricultural Advisory Committee came and did a delegation to Whitby Council, and what I heard was that twenty-five percent, one of the delegates indicated that twenty-five percent of his energy costs go to carbon tax. And I said, well, if you had that money back in your pocket, what would you do with it? The issue, the, the response I got from the delegate was, you know, in buying new farm equipment, modernize the farm. So, modernizing the farm, to me, means boosting productivity. You know, Canadians are being forced to visit food banks again, it's because the carbon tax is driving up the cost of food. In spite of these record numbers, Trudeau has again decided to hike his carbon tax by twenty-three percent this past April.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Counselor, I'm calling you to order now.
As part of his plan to quadruple the tax over the next six years, and it's evident --
Okay. So, Counselor, I have made a commitment to this council not to bring politics from another level government into this room. I'm going to ask you to withdraw your comments, and if not, I'm going to eject you from the meeting. Withdraw your comments. I'm going to give you one more option. Withdraw your comments or leave. Mr. Clerk noted in the meeting? Members of council, this is probably the most difficult time in the history of this country, since the Second World War. I am not going to let politics from other levels of government come into this council chambers, and I refuse to turn this council chamber into what you see at Question Period in Queen's Park or in Ottawa. Now, if you don't like what I said, challenge the chair right now. So, everybody understands where we're going from this day forward? I'm looking for nods. Okay. We are going to continue with this meeting. Members of council, there are rules for rejection. I'll have the clerk send the rules related to removal of an individual from the chambers, so you know how it will go forward in the future. So, we're clear. I don't get angry very many times, but I'm upset right now. So, we'll continue. I'm sorry for the interruption. Counselor Mackay?
Thank you, Chair Henry. I think I'll, I'll just be very brief in my comments. I think what we're seeing is, you know, we're seeing a lot of people that are, that are on the edge with housing, and they're accessing food banks in order to keep their ruse over their heads. We know that Feed the Need can take a dollar and turn it into three meals, and, you know, with a little help from other levels of government, we can definitely feed a lot more people and hopefully keep them in their homes, because what's driving them, I think, right now, we're seeing, yes, there's been an increase in cost of groceries. It is coming down. I don't know if, how many of you actually grocery shop, but I've noticed, it's coming down. Things are starting to come down, but the cost of keeping a house over their heads is, is not, and that's the challenge that a lot of people are facing, and it's forcing them into the food banks. So, I think, I fully support this, and the spirit of it is, is perfect, and I just hope that all of council will support this wholeheartedly as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wu?
Well, first, Chair Henry, I want to say thank you very much. Yeah, there is a respectful level of decorum that we should have in these chambers, and thank you very much. I did want to point out, with the food bank and this motion, and we've, and I think all of us have had experiences, and it says here, working people, you know, working people that now have to decide whether they look at paying the mortgage or rent, or putting food on the table. And I know there are cases where I have been at Christmas time giving out Christmas hampers, recognizing people that have come, and, you know, there's a certain level of dignity, and you, you know, the respect that people have to reach out to this level. But again, the motion itself speaks for itself. We have a big issue, you know, in all of our towns, hamlets, cities, you know, with this rising cost of food. Certainly, support this in every which way, but also looking again at what we are doing here in our community. And I just wanted to make a plug, there's a couple coming. One, we had a presentation at council that's called Brunchkin, and Brunchkin is a not-for-profit organization that provides nutritious breakfast and packaged lunch to elementary school children in nonprofit housing. So, there's different ways that we can assist. And the last one, again, I'm going to slide this in because there's no announcements, but I forgot to do it earlier to slide it in. The Claretton Board of Trade, with the Claretton Community Career Fair, along with Durham College Community Employment Service in West Claretton, this career fair is this Thursday at the Garnetby Record from twelve to three. So, there are opportunities, I should have slid that in earlier, the great job. We are trying to get people back on their feet. In this case, you know, we want people to have dignity, we want, it shouldn't be a case where you're looking at, wow, should I pay the rent or the mortgage, or put food on the table and jeopardizing something in between? So, great motion, and I think already somebody's called for a recorded vote, I think. If not, I'll call for a recorded vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you, Chair. So, no, really important issue, we've had a lot of challenges, as has been mentioned by many of the speakers, especially in Whitby with Salvation Army, Feed the Need, the different St. Vincent de Pauls across town, and there is such a massive demand that we really need to be asking for more supports for, for food banks, and we all need to be doing our own parts to try and do that. I know when Counselor Matt and I had our barbecue in the summer, that's what we did, we collected a lot of food and cash, because we know that cash going to Feed the Need will drive a lot more food. Those dollars go a lot further than what we could buy at the grocery store. So, instead of, you know, every time you go into the grocery store, buying an extra peanut butter, buying an extra thing, and filling up the food bank for the Salvation Army, it's like, give that money to Feed the Need, they can turn those dollars, as was mentioned early, into a lot more options, a lot more food, and we'll stretch that support further. So, fully supportive of the motion here today, and happy to see the recorded vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and, and of course, I fully support this motion, and I would just ask everybody to remember this as we get into budget details, because often the budget increases, broken down to it just being a few extra dollars a year here and there for our residents, but those few extra dollars can go quite a ways when it's being put towards food, and I have no doubt that many of the people, many of the increased, you know, people taking part in our food, in the food bank programs, are paying property taxes, or they're paying rent with property tax increases passed down to them from their landlord. So, let's remember this in everything we do, not just this, this very good motion, because we have an impact on people, and I think as a number of counselors have mentioned, often people have to make a decision on what they're going to spend their money on, but they don't have too much of an option when it comes to things like property taxes and rent. So, please, let's all remember this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't belabor this, I just want to say that, as in all cases, every municipality has a responsibility to the residents that we represent, and, and it's not just one level of government, it is all of our responsibility. It is not an, an unsheltered population that has the issues. It is, like Mayor Roy said, very much a sheltered residence situation these days, and, and so we all have a responsibility to help out.
Thank you. Counselor Wu?
Yeah, again, I'm going to slide this in. No, I, I want to wish, and I want to take this opportunity to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, but there will be some that will not be having a happy Thanksgiving. So, I challenge my colleagues around the table to give to a food bank this weekend, so at least we can have someone celebrating and have a happy Thanksgiving. So, thank you.
Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to you and your family. Counselor McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the amendment to this, and I just want to take this second to recognize that I do know that we have local businesses and farms that do support food banks directly through their donations already, and I can appreciate the idea that we're, want to collect money to buy from larger corporate vendors who might provide us with a better deal. But I also want to remind us that some of those same corporate vendors, you know, when we're out buying groceries for our family and we're looking for deals, you know, that thirty percent off on that already expired item from three days ago is not exactly a deal. Anyway, but thank you for bringing this forward.
So, thank you, and before I call the recorded vote, in my lifetime, so I'm, I'm probably the oldest one in the room, there was challenges when we were growing up with our friends, but not the challenges that we have today. And in order to fix a problem, first of all, you have to admit that you have a problem. And we've been asking as a council to have meetings with the upper levels of government to talk about the crisis of mental health addiction and homelessness, but it's far bigger than that. In order to understand how we got here today, you need to reflect on where the system failed. And in order to fix a system that's failed, you have to find a way to put the repairs into the system to get us down the road, and I'm not talking about tomorrow, I'm talking about five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. I hope that conversation is happening somewhere today, because there again, you, I know what you do in the communities, I know the charity events you go, I know the money the mayors raise in their communities, I know the money the counselors raise in their communities, and it's still not enough to meet the needs of our communities. And I'm, I'm reflecting just on the region of Durham. It goes from coast to coast to coast, and when do we -- And when do we have the big conversation about how we're going to fix this going forward? It's one of those days. It's Thanksgiving. It saddens me to think that there are people in our communities that will not be celebrating Thanksgiving. But then, there'll be people in our communities out serving meals and making sure what they can do, which shows that Durham is one of the most compassionate communities in this country. So, thank you, and it was a recorded vote, so I'll call the vote now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the motion is starting now.
Last motion, a motion regarding harassment of elected local government officials. Moved by Counselor Shahid, seconded by Counselor Mokahi. Counselor Shahid, it is fairly long and detailed. I'll leave it with you to decide where you want to start.
Through you, Chair Henry. I'm not going to read the motion. It's right in front of us. I just want you not make it contentious as well. I just want to highlight the fact that we are witnessing an alarming rise in harassment, intimidation, and violence against elected officials, particularly affecting women, our black community, and racialized communities, and two S-L-G-B-T-Q-I-A-plus representatives. This motion was brought in FCM and both AMO. And some of us, local councillors within Durham region, spoke about this very passionately, and I'm not going to go into the depths of it, but this only compounds the challenges of leadership, but also discourages underrepresented groups from participating in local politics, threatening the diversity crucial to our democracy. So, I'm going to keep it short. This motion calls on the federal government to collaborate with provinces and municipalities to implement protections for elected officials, their families, and staff, whether they bring it as a legislation, as happening in Ontario, or however they change the code of conduct, or give more power to integrity commissioners. We are urging all political leaders to be a model of civility and respect in public discourse. We must act now to safeguard our democratic institutions and ensure that politics remains accessible and inclusive for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mokahi is the seconder.
I go by many names. I think that, you know, enough is enough. We don't get elected to behave like children, and we don't get elected to not put the needs of the community first. And that is the base root of this for me, in particular, women. You see it. I've seen it time and time again, and, you know, we have this discussion around the table at AMO, and there is a deep-rooted concern over who will step up for these roles when they're faced with the kind of abuse that happens. And, you know, there are a lot of really great people around this table. There are a lot of really great colleagues provincially. It doesn't take much, though, to make us all cave down to our lowest denominator. And that is not who we are, that is not why we run for office. Generally, most of us run because we care, and that needs to be kept in the front. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Chair Henry. My colleagues who brought this motion forward have asked me to also speak to address this important motion before us, for anyone who's been watching any of the local politics unfolding within Pickering, or at AMO recently with my fellow councillor, councillor Nagy, addressing the bear pit at AMO. We've reached sort of a crisis proportion of the lack of civility and increasing harassment being faced by politicians at a municipal level, to the degree that, in my instance, or in Pickering council in general, the insults have crossed the line so far down the road. I was frankly unprepared in taking office, and as new councillor, there is no way for anyone to have been prepared for this. So, this is incredibly important to correct behaviors, get a handle on the situation, and recognize the harassment that is present at all levels of government, not just at a municipal level. And I thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pickles.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I'll be supporting the motion. I think it's a very important motion. We hear it at AMO, we hear it at the FCM. We're certainly not the only community that's been subject to this sort of abuse and harassment. And, you know, it's directed at everybody on council, and sometimes maybe people are less likely to approach me because I'm 6'2" and 200 pounds, but no jokes about that way. But, you know, some people are more susceptible and more prone to be intimidated, or people are more likely to go after them. I've seen, in our chambers and elsewhere, persons who have pursued, pursued, chased down other elected officials and other people in our chambers, and the police have to intervene and remove those persons. So, it's a very serious concern. You know, I've been on council for a little bit, and people would approach me and say, you know, say a dozen years ago, someone would approach me and say they're thinking of running representative committee. Greatest experience to go out there and run an election. It's very, very humbling, and if you're successful enough to be elected, it's a great experience. I would not encourage people to do that any longer. My children, or other youth in the community, or anyone in the community, if they came forward today, I'd say, don't do it. Don't do it. It's, it can be a thankless position, and, you know, there's a lot of hate directed at members of council, and the one thing I want to, I think Counselor Cook has spoken to that as well. The one thing I wanted to unfortunately recognize as well is a lot of the hate and harassment is also directed at government officials, at our staff, staff at the city, staff at the region, particularly staff on the front line who hear from residents or customers. Most of them are good, but the ones that are bad are very bad, and it's not appropriate to harass our staff and to call our staff names and to wait for them by a doorway. It's highly inappropriate, and we're seeing some very extreme behavior that's not appropriate. I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My colleagues in Pickering have spoken very well about what we have been dealing with and the toll that it takes on us. I'm wondering through you, Mr. Chair, if I could ask if the mover and second would consider a friendly amendment for distribution? If I understand it, currently, it's to the federal government. I would like to see a distribution, if you deem it appropriate as a friendly amendment, that a copy be sent to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing of Ontario, and the, I believe it's the Integrity Commissioner for the Province of Ontario, because they are the ones that are currently reviewing. And I think this is a very powerful motion.
Yes, we'll add the names to the list.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor Pietri. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I want to applaud the movers of the motion, of all the motions today, because I think that they were very well-intended, as they always are. You know, we're looking at the agenda, and we've had a number of presentations, and I know that throughout the process of us not only, you know, speaking to the motions, but just listening to them and absorbing them, we understand that the effects of our actions are, you know, weighted differently by individuals in the public, and the perception becomes reality for many. Politics south of the border made it mainstream and acceptable for things that were already happening. It just made it very public now to be open season on representatives. And I think in considering elective representatives, we also have to consider staff members, and I know that they have a different sort of shield. Some may consider their paycheck, or their authority, or their tenure to be their shield, but, you know, they're family members, and they as individuals, whether at this level or other levels, are maligned often. And I think anyone probably listening to this debate would think that we're speaking to ourselves. But I think what we are missing is the fact that if you want good people to represent your interests, you need to make the environment a good one for them to be able to work in. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to draw example of myself, but, you know, by experience, I think there are a few that have, you know, in this chamber, experienced what I have in past. And I suppose in past, you could say, that's fine, we signed up for it, and that was the expectation, but family members didn't, and they don't. So, when, you know, Counselor Shahid mentions that this includes family members, it's important for us to recognize that those family members are looking at, you know, whether it be our actions or our representation, as a means of inspiration for what they do in the future. If you have a family member that says they never want to be a commissioner of X or work on the front line of Y, or represent a community as a result of actions taken towards them, that's a huge loss, because I think in each and every single person in this room, be it, you know, a chairman, or a councillor, or a staff member at any level, you have the ability to be able to inspire those who are going to be the next generation of, we use the term leaders a lot, but public servants. The public needs good public servants. And I think, I think what I'm trying to say is that, you know, you find yourself with this motion, and it's one that I believe is well-intended, but the consequences of someone not mentoring a colleague, taking them under their wing, essentially playing politics with the opportunity to instead help them comply, as opposed to being litigious and aggravating, or help them understand and guide them in a direction that is going to hopefully change their ways, is also our responsibility. So, consistency is the message. If we are going to talk about politics getting in the way of, you know, a particular issue or agenda or meeting, we also have a responsibility not to be political. And I think one of the people that I'd like to congratulate, and he is a friend, is, and I know I've served under different mayors, and I respect them all, I actually love all of my colleagues and staff members that I've worked with, because I know that they're all intending great things for the community. I believe that. I may be at fault for believing that. But, you know, with Mayor Carter, we've had the opportunity in Oshawa to really change the direction of the discourse and the function of what government needs to be.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. I can't add much more to what has already been said. I just wanted to thank the mover and second of this motion for bringing this forward, and I don't know if it was, could this be sent to all local municipalities as well? Are all municipalities?
So, are you talking about the municipalities within the region of Durham?
Yes. I don't know. You could go beyond, but at least the ones within the region of Durham.
Yes, just a quick question to the mover. This is a position of AMO, right? FCM, so Federation of Canadian Municipalities?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schumer? Or Mayor Schumer, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I fully support this motion, the intent of it, and, you know, I've always said that, you know, you get into politics, you better have a thick skin. I stand by those words. But, you know, as everybody's pointed out, there are certain lines, and it's no longer, you know, constructive criticism, it's no longer just a taxpayer or a resident expressing frustration. And it's difficult, right? We have to weigh recommendations like this against what we enjoy in this country with respect to our rights. But, you know, as we've often found in history, those rights do have limits, and it's got to be recognized. Much of it comes down to, you know, moral behavior, you know, even more so maybe than legal. You know, harassment is not legal. And, you know, I think, I'm not necessarily recommending an amendment to this, but, you know, if something is done, then I think, and I fear, what we will be asking for next is enforcement and punishment being doled out, because I think that will be the bigger problem, quite frankly, is, does anything get done? You know, because there's a lot of people taking flak that should not, and of course, you know, members of family is definitely that. But my fear is, of course, that, as it's been alluded to already, much of this has become normalized. And we see it every day, especially in this country. We see flags with vulgar words, vulgar images on them, flying high on property, flying high on vehicles, and it's just acceptable. And, you know, it's, does that cross the line? Well, you know, it's difficult to say, and of course, those people have the right to fly those, but it's just become normalized so much that, you know, it's pathetic. And at AMO, it was discussed in a number of workshops that I attended, yes, that, you know, politicians are often not thanked. We've all probably been on the other side of the fence now and then where we've criticized them. But, you know, I now make it a regular occurrence that at every Brock Township council meeting, I thank the members of council, identify a member of council at a meeting, and acknowledge what they have done, what they continue to do to serve, because there's not a lot of thanks that often goes on, and if we have to sometimes thank ourselves and thank our colleagues, then that helps perhaps in a very little way to progress these issues along. So, thank you very much to the movers of this motion for bringing it forward. I don't think it'll be the end of it, though. I think even if everything we want is enacted as a result of this, we will deal with enforcement as we deal with so many enforcement problems, and that'll become the next level of frustration. But thank you again.
Thank you. Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did not sign up to be abused. That is not what I signed up for. I signed up, I signed up to serve my community, and the job is hard enough as it is. And I feel very sad with my two neighboring municipalities, what's happening, and it's unacceptable. We should not be beating each other up. We all signed up for the same job, and I don't know that anybody can do anything about it, but I just want to say that I did not sign up to be abused by the people that I work with. I signed up to serve my community. They can be, they can be strong, and they can be demanding, and that's what I expect of them, but I expect support from the people that I work with.
Thank you. Counselor Nicholson. Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm not going to echo all the words of the previous members of council. I think that all the comments were good, they were enlightening, I think, for those that may be watching. But I do want to stress a couple of points that I think we sometimes miss as we view council meetings, et cetera. One is, we, all of us, have to strive every meeting to debate the merits of the issue, not the person. And I think if we do that, if we argue passionately about our positions and passionately about And I think if we do that, if we argue passionately about our positions and passionately about the steps we want to take or oppose on the merits of the argument rather than the merits of who's moving it or, put it simply, whose ox is getting gored, et cetera, then I think we're all going to benefit in the long run. I've been around longer than most and I've seen this cycle occur and I would say in my history, this is the worst I've ever seen, the abuse of elected officials and staff at all levels of government. The expectation of some members of the public is everything has to be done yesterday and for free and if you don't meet that criteria, somehow you're the enemy. And I think we've got to stop looking at each other and the public as the enemy and simply look at each other as partners on a journey. The second part I wanted to raise and I think it's an important part that all members of council are well aware of, is the impact is not just on us or on our staff, but it's on our families as well. It has gotten to the point where it is difficult sometimes to simply go shopping in a corner store with your spouse for sometimes the abuse that you take occasionally or the issues that you have to deal with. Our families should not have to be subject to some of the phone calls that come to our homes or some of the comments that are made. They didn't sign up for the position as Counselor Crawford said, we did, but they in many ways ended up being on a punching bag along with us. And I'm not just talking about our mature spouses, our children, our grandchildren who travel with us, they often are subjected to incidents that should not occur anywhere near them. So I think when we keep in mind and we talk about how we create respect in our communities, we have to make it sure that the community also knows that councillors, mayors, regional chairs, our staff at all levels are not punching bags, but more importantly, our families are not punching bags in any way, shape or form and I think the public has to understand that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council, that exhausts the speakers' lists on this motion. A recorded vote was called? I'll call the recorded vote then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, recorded vote on the motion is starting now.
That exhausts the members' motions. Members of council, there is a confidential matter before us, you all received the memo, is there a need to go into closed session?
Presentation.
Oh, sorry, there is a presentation, I apologize. So in that case, I will ask, okay, so I would go ask that we, someone puts a motion forward to go into closed session to receive a verbal update regarding security of property of the region. Moved by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Leahy. Mr. Clerk, before I accept the motion, we need generally five minutes.
Maybe ten.
So ten, why don't I call for a 15-minute recess? So I'm going to call for a 15-minute recess immediately after this motion or all included in the motion. That's okay to the mover and the secondor?
Yes.
Okay. On the motion to go into closed session and to take a 15-minute recess, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, we are in recess to give...
Okay, members of council, we have 17 between online and in the room. So in the interest of transparency and open government, I'm reporting in public session that there were no motions or direction given during the confidential update on a matter pertaining to the security of property of the municipality. Okay, Mr. Clerk, thank you. Just before we go to adjournment, two things. Yesterday was Councilor Cahy's birthday, so happy birthday. Today is Councilor Leahy's birthday, so happy birthday. To all of my colleagues in the room and staff, I wish you a happy Thanksgiving to our teams that will be working this weekend, not only what we've just talked about, but to our paramedics and to our police officers and those who do all the other things that make the region work, and to our municipal counterparts where they have teams, including fire, working this weekend. We wish them all a happy Thanksgiving because they'll be working and not able to celebrate Thanksgiving with their families. So if you see them, say thank you. And on that note, the business for the day is done. Mr. Clerk, Councilor Chapman, motion to adjourn, or motion to adjournment, signed by Councilor Mayor Petri, on adjournment. All those in favor. In opposition, seeing none, that carries. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.